This conference will now be recorded.
The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Tuesday, April 30, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Key upcoming events: The M A G Couples Championship is April 3 and 4. The Elk State Golf Tournament is April 6 and 7. The W G A Electric Member member is the 10th and 11th of April. The A J G A Golf Tournament is the 12th and 13th. The Candidate Town Hall for 2024 Elections is April 14. The 50th Anniversary Cocktail Party is April 16, 5 to 7. The 50th Gala Anniversary is April 19, from 5 to 10. The 50th Anniversary Seventies Golf Tournament is April 20, 7 a.m. to noon. The 50th Block Party is April 20, noon to 5 p.m. And the Highlands County Citrus is April 25 of 2024. Public comments?
Good morning. I wonder if you'd like to congratulate the district of running the construction breakfast. It was very interesting, lots of informative. It was attended by a lot of construction people. And the pamphlet here, I think people should pick up because they can understand what's going on in the community where the guidelines, code enforcement, and that sort of thing like that. I know we'd like to be able to change some of the building houses with no garages and no sprinkler systems and that sort of thing like that. So as I say, it was very informative, nice to meet some of the construction people. Secondly, the painting of the district has been very, very uplifting, very, very nice. I think everybody agrees. The colors are very, very good and really appreciate this attitude that things can be fixed and they can have a different look. I think one thing I'd like to have them do is have rotary in front of Sunlight Boulevard on the clubhouse. If it could be jazzed up a little bit, painted, that rotary inside the rotary, okay? It's just a wall.
You're talking roundabout?
Roundabout?
Roundabout, yeah. The inside, it could just be there. I don't know why you said that. Thank you very much for your time.
Any more public comment? A motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Call the vote? Oh, no. Call the vote.
Supervisor Brooks?
Hello.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Okay, we need a motion to approve the... Oh, I did all those. Does Scott have a?
Good morning, staff, Board of Supervisors, residents of Sunlight, Scott Gerwach, Collins County, District 3. I know it's been a while since this evening. We've had some conflicts in our schedule and I'm a little bit ill with some sinus infections and what have you. Pollin County, I don't know about the rest of the county, hasn't had fun this year. Actually, I'm getting over another one now. Not a whole lot to bring as far as the county updates. Things are relatively quiet, which isn't a bad thing. We're back in a bunch of time again. I'm sure that you folks are getting close and thought already started the same process. We've been working with your general manager, Boz, and talks, and I see you have something on your agenda today to discuss on the Lake Boulevard or Shumacher Road and also a potential recycling location. We continue to try to work forward with that. We've had some conversations with the hospital on some properties that they have. We have temporarily paused those conversations with them and seen that we can take a location still towards the front end of your community, but on the Sunland Lake piece of property. And we are currently underway with the expansion of our landfill. The current cell that we've been using for over 20 years is getting close to capacity. This has been a long-range project and it cost about $17 million. So better than a year, year and a half project to construct that new cell. If you can imagine, there's a lot of permitting and a lot of red tape to go through when you're adding on to the landfill. This year, I'm up for reelection, seeking my second term. Certainly would appreciate any of y'all's support, unless the petition cards with Boz, the candidate required to get 691 petition cards completed. Those petition cards are not a... They're not an endorsement. They're not a vote. Simply just enables me to appear on the ballot in 2024. I've always done my best to try to advocate for this community out here. My first term, I'm on my fourth year, successful in bringing over half a million dollars of funding to the district through some federal money that came our way to help you out with some of your wastewater, the construction that you need. And I know the district shares all their social media pages on those improvements that they've made. Those things like work in a good direction and be prepared. In the future, when we have some of these events, it looks like y'all have done a terrific job and avoid some of the mishaps that we've had in the past. Other than that, our county is still in strong financial shape with over $25 million in reserves, which is about three and a half months. We have a board policy to keep a minimum of three and a half months of operating expenses in reserve for our county taxpayers. So we've been fortunate, we've been able to do that. I've had some brief conversations with the property appraiser about what land values are doing this year and what they're initially seeing. I may not see some of the increases that we've seen in the past in land values, but we're not seeing much of a decline in land values. I think as some of you have noticed, the real estate market has changed. Properties are still selling, they're not selling as quickly. But those properties and desirable locations that are decent homes, what have you, are still bringing close to this price, not necessarily bidding wars that we were in six months to a year ago. Other than that, I don't have any further updates. We'll be glad to entertain any questions that you might have at this time. And as always, if any of the staff or supervisors have any questions or residents, I encourage you to reach out to me and I'll be glad to follow up with you. That's all I have to say. I personally want to thank you for the support that you've shown for Sunland Lake.
Absolutely.
Your largest residential community. I had a talk with my fellow commissioners about a month ago because we are in the process of selling another round of lots that we have out here. We're also working with the district to identify which lots that will be needed for your wastewater treatment facility. And we're going to be coordinating meetings with U.S. Engineering Department, our engineering. And just kind of sit down and talk about those. Looking forward to attending your 50th Anniversary Gala and celebrating your community out here. And I think you folks are doing a really good job. You have a nice quality community out here. So I will continue to fight the best that I can. I've advocated to my other commissioners about Shumacher Road. Some of y'all have been hearing some of what I've said over the past three years. I've been fighting for funding. I've been successful in getting $200,000 in funding to the site so far for Shumacher Road to go ahead and pave it. Need about another $400,000 for the funding to completely fund that project. So I'm going to continue to work on that with another round of lots coming for sale. My argument with my fellow commissioners is, of course, we inherited those lots when they defaulted back to the county. People don't pay their property taxes, they end up going up for first tax certificate sale and then if we don't sell the certificates on them, then they revert back to the county. When they revert back to the county, all of these folks is means or a race. So all of your improvement district back taxes just disappearing. And I've argued with my fellow commissioners, I think that we owe something back to this community to give some of them, to Sunland Lake and Sebring. So I will continue to advocate for that and do my best again for you. But I do appreciate your support. And so now I don't have an opponent. I'm not looking forward to having an opponent. This campaigning is no fun. I'm a politician by default that really doesn't care a whole lot for politics. It gets in the way. I think y'all experience that and it's the way of doing good things. So I will continue. I've grown up here for 47 years. I want to serve one more term. I don't look to make a career out of this, but there's drainage projects and things that I'm working on in the county that I want to see through. And I fear that if I was two steps down now, that some of those projects wouldn't come to completion and we're making some good ground with them. So once again, I do appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott. You do a very good job in this outcome, so we really appreciate the work. The question I have is, if you could elaborate just a little bit more about the Sunland Lake Boulevard deal?
No. It's on the agenda.
I understand that, but why are you already... Maybe even give us a brief overview.
Yeah, I think they probably prefer to talk about that when it comes to the agenda. I hope that they've got some things that they want to share with the rest of you. So I would prefer, and I can hang around for that if there's any further questions.
Well, the only question I have now is that the condition of Sunlight Boulevard needs to be repaired before anything gets swapped around. Is it going to be taken care of before or are we going to get...
Those are things that are going to be in discussion.
It's on the action agenda. We're discussing it in detail.
But we don't know if...
It doesn't matter what he says right now.
We haven't gotten that far that we're talking about. This all just come about in the past, you know, past month or so. So I would encourage you to just wait until this one's on the agenda and I'm sure they'll offer comment during that time.
Well, I appreciate that. I think everybody else would.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Are you going to do that, please?
Yes. So good morning. Actually Cindy got tied up. She's at her county position. She got tied up today, so I apologize for that. But I did want to own the record to official recognition of Cindy Kramer that worked for us for a little bit over a year. Basically, for special recognition for Cindy Kramer, Cindy has been the direct with the district for over one year and served as the community services department director. She was an integral part in the district receiving the $200,000 state grant for the new playgrounds, running our recreation department, further establishing our district's social media presence. Not only is resident of Sunland Lake, but her dedication to our community was also evident in all her actions. She has moved on to the planning of the record at the county and will be a great friend and have worked in our community. But we will present, I will make a effort to get up to the county, the county board meeting, present her with our Sunland Lake coin number six, that she will get for her service, her excellence, and her service to our community. So I just want to get that on the record. She did a great job for us. We have your mom doing a great job. And we just got to make sure we can recognize our good folks for years to come. We do better for them once we train them, get them used to being professional. When they gravitate up in their ranks, we can only benefit from that. So I appreciate her time.
Okay, the district emergency planning is next.
Okay. So I'm going to attach a date to have an update. This came out yesterday, last meeting, quickly, at a couple citizens had some comments and concerns about where we stand in preparation for hurricane season or just general hurricane season. It was a great... That's near and dear to my heart, having written those plans at the national level. So I wanted to give you all an update as well as our citizens, where we stand on a lot of the ongoing issues. So what you see there is basically a summary of some of our critical areas that we've worked on this past, since last season with drainage, swales, continuing, we map them, we plan to maintain them, we've located our critical structure mapping and we marked it, as well as back generation. We work with our county, so this is a designated county shelter mainly for special needs slash pets, is what we ask this location to be, or I should say, they ask us to support it. So we're fine with that. And we're going through the work with the county emergency management team to get some funding here for power generation, resources within this structure, so it's not coming out of Sunland Lake Boulevard, it's a county requirement. So we'll work, continue to work with that. That's going to come in motion number, a motion that'll be asked. We're working on district supplies, building a reserve internally to our staff. Communication, we've changed to a lot of cell phones that we use for staff or district. We've gone to a radio network that's not tied to the cell phone network. So this will be used for emergency purposes. I got it all the way through our entire staff, including our golf assets used for golf operations day to day and our security and code enforcement team. It's been a great benefit because it's immediate contact. This is nationwide. Bob Rumpf will take his vacation, you know, half the country away and take his radio and if I need him, I just pick it, call him, and I can talk to him about a concern problem. As well as if the network's down, we can still talk. So that's a good thing we've changed. We are looking at satellite lanes for some of our lift stations. Right now, we're tied to the cellular network there for the lift station goes down. There is an opportunity for us to go satellite for all the network, for all our operations, our plant, as well as our lift stations. And then in that scenario, if we had a total power break as well as a cellular break, all our lift stations would still be functioning through satellite. And it's not a great cost, using the Tesla Elon Musk system. So we're training that and our IT guys are researching that. I'll skip the back generation. We got a request for automated shutters. And I say automated, either roll up or push button for this building, the district office, and we're getting one for the clubhouse. My concern there that was brought up is that right now it takes our staff, which reality is, before a hurricane, there's a lot of other things. It takes approximately five to six hours to button these buildings up, and that's all hands on thing. I think we need to get to a point, because we use these, these are critical resources, assets in our structure here, that for that small cost, we can get automated where I'm not sending the workers to do it. I can have Melissa just go to a button or do a reel, and we can start dropping down the hurricane shutters in the event of a really bad storm, and then it's a safe, protected structure for all these locations. We've also asked the county, because of our designation as a emergency site, to ask for refund or funding there. So that's going through that process. Not asking for anything today, I just want to give you some numbers for our two buildings. The clubhouse will be probably in the $100,000 range, but these are what you see at your houses, just a drop down, rolling. Probably don't need the high tech of a push button. But I think that would save endless man-hours that I could have my guys checking lift stations, clearing roads, that type of stuff, instead of buttoning up these buildings. So that was a concern that came up yesterday. Yes, sir.
Do you think with the three buildings, somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars?
Yes, yeah. And we will be asking through the county emergency management state for reimbursement for that if we do it on our own.
That you're doing it all or just for the community?
These three buildings. This building, headquarters, district office, and the clubhouse.
The county?
We would ask...
Or everyone?
Yes, we would ask because our district office is a critical node for command and control operations, I'll call it, that we would... That needs to be operated from 24/7. Our clubhouse and this location by default becomes shelters with feeding opportunities that could get down on... That the county emergency management team said that makes total sense, submitted to us. We'll get to state.
Talking $2,000, $2,000.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I would think in that budget cycle, we should budget for it and see if we can get refunded by state resources. The district banning SOPs, we're updating our rosters and so on, being added tanks, because right now, again, tied to, if there's a large blackout on all it, everyone's going to be sucking up all the gas everywhere. We want the resources on site. We only have about a day's worth right now, so we've added some tanks to get us about a week's worth for all our resources, so our vehicles can keep going in the event there's a dry up around here based on... So that's happening within our budget right now. I'll skip the interconnect. And we've added small generators, spare utility vehicle. So if you're not aware of the low pressure systems are a pump. If someone's house, pump doesn't work. We had part of our SOP that our utility guys would go down the streets, power up the pump, pump their, if it's down for a while, pump their septic tanks out to our system and then go to the next house, next house, and next house. We would provide that as a service, no cost to our residents, to get them about three or four days for their septic systems, with their low pressure systems, I should say. To do that, you need to get a small, low-pressure generator for every truck, so they can do that. So we're doing that. The restaurant capacity, whole storage, working with our restaurant team over there, what do we need to increase in the event a storm is coming? Drop a deep freezer out there, a freezer truck, drop it out there with some resources, because we found, not only during the pandemic, during past storms, a lot of people gravitate to our restaurant to eat because there's nothing out in the community, it's all shut down. We want to have the resource to keep those operations going for our residents. So we're looking into that. We are going to start doing some tests of what I call going analog. Right now, we're very, that's just the end of the world, we're very tied to this automation. If our network goes down, if our pay system goes down, if our email go down, what we can do to keep operations going, to give our residents the comfort that we still are operating and in control. So we're going to call it going analog. So we'd still be able to operate, make calls, do inter-office products with an intranet, not an internet. And we're working on what that means for us to collect either, let's say we're down for a week, we're not going to stop collecting whatever we have to collect. And especially if we're only doing work for our residents, you know, those charges that go with that, sorry. So we're going to figure out how analog system, we can build it in place as a backup if all our network's down. So the two things that I'll say, first, the back, this is the one building that does not have a backup generator. It's now a county shelter. We are definitely going to get that reimbursed funding. I would like, because of the season coming up, I would like to get that generator in place and then just get the county to build it. So we're asking for a $45,000 motion to put the generator in place. It's the same contract that we have for all the buildings, and then we'll present that as a completed task to our county for reimbursement. That's a non-issue with the county, but I just want to get it going. If we wait for the county approval Saturday, we'll wait through to the hurricane season and it won't be no backup generator. The second, for more information as well as our residents, we have a dormant interconnect network to Avon Park. What? It's a pipe that goes out across 27th and Avon Park, and it's dormant. The intent was, at least it's installed, the intent was to get that to a point where it's functioning, that if we ever lose our wells, we can draw water to our residents each year. I can't tap into Sebring too far away. Avon Park's a great place to help us there. The challenge we have where, and I will be approaching county, the challenge we have there is Avon Park may not have the capacity to pump water to us. So really, I have two municipalities that need help from the county. So I'm going to be throwing that on the county's help list to see what they can do for both of us to get that as a function interconnect for potable water for my residents in case our system totally goes to the foot. And reverse, if Avon Park needs water, because it's interconnect, we just flip a switch, we could pump water to them and help them out. But truly think it's a county issue because we're dealing with municipal facilities. More to follow on that, and then we talk about the shelter. So it's just a quick update of where we stand for emergency preparation. Do you have any questions? And I'll just ask a question if someone can make one.
I move to approve purchase of the $45,000 generators, Community Center.
Call the vote?
Oh, do we have any discussion? Other comment? Call the vote.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Next is a discussion.
One alibi, Madam President, it's on your packet, but we did add it last minute. What came out of this weekend, this accident? Y'all dealt with that accident, we all dealt with that accident. Granted, something with the district involved. It drove an internal problem that I wanted to make sure our staff knows that there's a critical information requirement that comes to us that goes to you. You'll get...
Oh, do we have any discussion of the comment? Call the vote.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes. Um, next is a discussion.
One alibi, Madam President, it's on your packet, but we did add it last minute. What, what came out of this weekend, this accident? You all dealt with that accident, we all dealt with that accident. Granted, something with the district is off. It drove an internal problem that I wanted to make sure our staff knows that there's a critical information requirement that comes to us that goes to you. You'll get this list, this is a work in progress, this is a, but this is, this is a project that if any of those 10 things happen at whatever level, notification will come up to my office, and then you all, to assist with any comments from citizens, will get at least a start point to answer your questions of concern. The IT network crashes, there's a fire that affects more than one house that's spread, a land or a house, a closure of a road, those types of simple things. So I wanted to make sure that all our staff knew there's some critical information that's required, and it's not like, we'll just wait till Monday and tell somebody. We're not going to do that. It's immediate response, immediate notification, the entire staff knows those 10 things. So I don't care if they're sitting at their house and they hear this on the map, they'll make the notification to me, and I'll be able to send a note to you all, giving you the, the start point of discussion. So we start feeding your information. And we'll get this published in an SOP, we'll get it published at our locations here as well as on our website for our residents to know that we're concerned about these things, and if they're aware of it, they can notify us as well. We'll confirm it, and then we'll get the information out. So that, that's it. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, next on the agenda is the land purchase. We're going to discuss and hopefully approve the, do you want to go?
Yes, sir. You see it there, you see the data. This was the parcel next to the, the map in your packet.
Yep.
It's actually a whole parcel next to the district office, six in total. We had it resurfaced, we had title search done, we're doing all the issues with it. No concerns whatsoever. We came down to a, we defined $23,000 sales price. Sellers covering majority of the cost, we're just going to cover the initial taxes and then convert it to a district parcel. So there will be no tax ramifications moving forward, since it'll be district need, have needs. It's, it's, we just need to go to accept it. All the documents are in the process, they've assigned the initial deposit. We're good based on your last guidance. So just getting final confirmation from you all, so we can send them the wire and the money today and then get this thing into our record form.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Go ahead. Okay.
My question is, how did we come up with the price? Did we go with verified comps of other?
Yes, sir. We confirmed, they started at a half a million dollar start point. We confirmed comps down the street, they were in the 275 range. And then after some negotiation back and forth, we settled on that number. They came back with a 262, we asked for 250, they accepted 250. So it's very competitive with neighborhood streets that are still open, coming to parcel. Yes, sir.
I'm owed to purchase of the parts at 524 Sunlight Boulevard and 5120 Sunlight Boulevard for $250,000. I second.
Public comment? Call the vote.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes.
We, uh...
I need to sign that.
The only other thing I give you on this parcel request was here, the, the number is still holding firm in the $200 range. That's something that I would not recommend if we get to that much larger. There's been other interest, developers trying to negotiate with the owner, he's a local contractor. We're going to still keep our eyes open for it, but I don't think there's going to be much of a...
No.
You ask for realtor, and then him, yeah, it's a lot of...
I'm just saying, something that...
There's challenges with that parcel for development, not for us, because we're going to make part of it. For a developer, and this is fully transparent, that there's issues with the, not only the zoning, but the wetlands, the proximity to the lake, a lot of that, that area is just unusable. So a developer would be tied to the streets, and a lot of them just interested for that amount of money for that few lots.
This guy's been sitting on property for very long.
Many years. We're, we're, he knows we're interested at a certain number, and we'll just wait to see if he ever comes asking.
Discussion on the initial 2025 budget guidance from the general manager.
So what you have here is, the way we're, we're going to work our budget as a staff is that from my desk, from my departments, I can give a start point on their...
There you go.
I'm going to start point to all our departments of where we stand fiscally and guidance, so they can start working their inner department budget numbers. They're doing that now. We've issued this out, just a broad brush guidance that I've given them to help them with their number crunching as they start coming back between me and finance director will sit in each department, and then be able to present to you based on timeline in this packet, how we need your guidance to help inform this product, this process as we go the next few months. So it's very specific. There's some really exacting language of what we want to do next year financially if we can. And some broad issues of the 3%, no more than 3% across any increase across the budgets. We want to put X amount into our reserves, X amount is anticipated into the waste of water, so on and so forth. So it really just sets the guidance for them as well as setting the timeline. So in the packet, you'll see a timeline that starts with the, with this issuance of this package. And then the next time it comes to you all for your input would be the, a meeting in May where you all will be able to, you'll see a draft district budget, you'll see the start point, the recommendations, and then individually or as a board, we'll be able to influence that by saying, no, we don't want this, we don't want this, so we'll start that process, but it won't be starting from scratch. A lot of that work will be done, the numbers will be crushed. Right now, based on our revenue collection, based on our expenditure this year and how we're being fiscally conservative, right now, until I see the department budget, we are not, I am not recommending an assessment increase. I think we're very successful in what we need. We had a already approved, state approved 512 utility increase, that'll continue, that has to continue, we're in year two. Until I see the golf slash restaurant budget, I, I'm not recommending right now any increases in either dues, membership, that type of stuff, right now. But I haven't seen their budget yet. So until I put your numbers together, I may come back and say our dues, our membership dues need to be increased. We'll have that discussion. But this really just gets a good start point, and it also gives you all a product to see where we're kind of going by department for the staff, and then start influencing that product. The intent here is by basically August, we are almost done, we're hopefully done our budgeting process. We have a good idea for 2025, we get the assessments approved for next year, and then we're, we're slapping the table at the August or September meeting to say budget approved, execution point. It's going to be a smooth process, departments are all working their numbers now. And if you read that and have any specific commentary, please get back to me and we can start shaping the department.
Well, one comment I would make is, as far as golf and membership, I could not in any way support any increase in funds based on what they have, they have to deal with this year. The courses are unacceptable, and I think our people tolerated it, but as far as trying to add another 5% of whatever next year, I cannot support that. Just count that and catch, go forward. If you think you want to put it in there, go ahead.
I would agree, I'm not looking for any increase. Let us figure out, that may be up there.
Got you.
You want any other comments? I'm just curious.
If you, if you've digested enough of the personal comments out, I'm fine, but it's really just for information purposes, just to show you the timeline.
I mean, what I would be looking for, I'd like to see still the amenities put into the...
Make it into the assessment. I got it.
You notice, also, you notice here that it says 19 years left on the $300,000 for the... That can't be 9 years, right?
They are, yeah, I'm sorry, it is 9, I apologize. It's a 10-year contract, yes.
And the excavator for $175,000, that's what we're doing now.
We're, we're doing that, so that will come off.
I don't, I would not support a restaurant on 27th of July. I would really back that up, we killed that once, we'll have it again.
It was caused.
Looking for, looking for comments?
I can tell you, we have replaced 9 years of turtle, not the same conversation that we had this year, it's 18 years.
And I don't think how we can afford it next year. I think we need to develop a plan for turtle.
I don't know. But I prefer to move all of them.
I agree.
And then the last, I guess it changed the date from what they originally were, and we do have one that's listed wrong, July 27th, it's a sad day, so I assume that's what should be utilized there.
All right, we'll check that out.
And the other two, we lost the dates on, what was it, 5, it was meeting on 4/25, 5/21, so those have been long.
Yes, sir. That gives the staff more time to do their projects.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, so I have it on my calendar.
I got you, yeah. Well, I will confirm all those dates, make sure we do.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am. On the screen, you see Sunlight, the extension from Ortega all the way to Blueberry. Below is the Sunlight. Blue is what is a four lane, quasi-four lane with turn light, and then the transition to a two lane going out to Albo with some sidewalks and so on. So in our, working with Scott and some of the other commissioners, as well as county staff engineers and, our discussions have been going back and forth on Schumacher. We, we kind of threw a mix to try to see if there's a compromise that we can come to, to assist with the expedite of Schumacher, but also it's something that this is a direct representation of Sunlight Boulevard. It's our main entrance. It shows whatever that place looks like, it's a direct reflection on us. And for, and no offense to our county, because they have hundreds and thousands of miles of road, this made more sense for us to just acquire it, be responsible for it, maintain it, because then we're answering to the people that aren't only using it, but all our businesses and homeowners. So adding that into the, the discussion where we have an appetite and interest to acquire Sunlight, could we use that to offset the discussion? So there's a drive at the funding that if we ever had approved for Sunlight, could be migrated to Schumacher and then, and then assist with the completion of that. In the discussions with, with county staff, it made no sense, they were all supportive, and they'll feed that information up to the commissioners. And that was county engineer, the roads bridge engineer, as well as the administrative. In discussion with the supervisor at the last county meeting, there was an interest in if that's, if that's on the table, that would maybe seal the deal. The recommendation by Scott, as well as the chairman, in my individual discussions with the commissioner was, we need to get the sense of board, if you're willing to accept it, then it moves to a county discussion. It's more them answering our request rather than them forcing it on us and then waiting for an answer. So to do that, we've crafted a motion here that if offered, we would accept from the county, and assume responsibility for Sunlight Boulevard in its entirety, from Highway 27 to Albo, in its current condition, with all the improvements, signage, everything, in exchange for the full completion of Schumacher Road from Ortega to Blueberry. Coordinates will be made with the county on a turnaround spot on Schumacher, Blueberry that's circled through in, as well as the potential need for retention bonds on the north side of Sunlight, on Schumacher, on our parcels. So if you look at Ortega, and, and this would be done, we would give the county a two-year window of 25, 26. So if they can focus their efforts on Schumacher by 2026 completion, we're willing to accept immediate responsibility for Sunlight, and then we're responsible for all improvements in the current condition. And I say that, we've assessed it, there was no county plans, no money being pushed towards Sunlight Boulevard for another 10 years. It's only a 10-year replacement or resurfacing timeline. So they're not going to move up a 10-year plan to accommodate us to get some resurfacing in return of, I wouldn't do that. So I don't expect them to do that. We'd been fixing potholes, the curbs, and we've been doing that. So I'm not worried about the amount of money that the county's been putting into it, because they have. They fixed signs, and they didn't re-strike. I give them full credit for that, appreciate that. So the striking has done for those parts, we would have about a five-year window to reuse the strike, because they've already done it. And the curbs would, and we would work overtime. So I'm not worried about that. The business, business for Sunlight, probably in a five-year window is a resurfacing, milling overlay, resurfacing, grind it up, put it down in a flat, flat dock. And that would probably be close, if at all, into close to the million dollar range, to be honest, because that's three miles of road. And it's so large, because it's, it's something basic, it's four things at the very beginning. It would be close to that. We would be able to segment that, we'd be able to put it into our ongoing yearly resurfacing plan, because there's a lot of good life span on Sunlight Boulevard. So I'm not worried about that, it's all in the face of one time. But it makes total sense that if we come out of this board meeting accepting that if offered, then it'll get on an agenda at the county level, and then they can have a brief discussion saying, they want it, let's give it to them. The hardest discussion, I want to speak for Scott or the county, is that are they willing to take the, the tit for tat here? They need to finish Schumacher if they want us to take Sunlight. That is part of the deal. We can't just say, we'll take Sunlight, work Schumacher on your own time. We need Schumacher, because in two years, that's why I use 2026, that's the time we're going to turn ribbon cutting new road to our waste water plant. So we need our road to connect to the road. Unless our road's going to connect to a shallow road, that's going to be a lot...
I think this is the next one.
I do, too.
Yeah. I fully support it, and so I, I'll make a motion to be accepted, assume responsibilities on Light Boulevard with the caveats that you have listed in here.
I think it's a great idea, too. However, in the future, I would like to see what the law provides us with, as opposed to you reading it to us. What do you want to say?
I got you.
I mean, I see a picture here, and then I'm hearing what you say, but I, I have not read it.
Oh, sorry, it's in the, in the actual motion.
That's the motion.
That's what we would send it. That's what I read.
That's the motion.
Yeah. So Scott, what do you think? Something the county would like to do? Is that, is that kind of what the county is offering?
Yeah, to reaffirm what Paulson said, he had met with county staff out here, he had department heads out here, we started all the discussion.
Is that completely done?
I had informed you, I'm not sure if this is on or off of me.
Is that better?
There you go.
Yeah. Because my ears are plopped up a little bit, but, yeah, this all came up in discussion with the department heads, it was brought to, for our board to proceed, for this to come in front of our board, we would need something from Sunlight by your board, that you're willing to start, to start that negotiation and start that conversation, okay? For them to put it on our agenda, we need an official action from the five of you to start that conversation, okay? One thing I want y'all to understand, of course, this, this community was chartered back in the 70s, okay? And this is how this was all set up out here. I've set up here, I've stood here before, when I first got elected, I know that this is a large tax base out here for the county, okay? Everyone, you pay county taxes just like I do, but you also pay improvement district taxes, okay? But what you pay into the county is also for county infrastructure that many of you are using on a daily basis. You lead this community and you use other county infrastructure that we have lost the maintaining and improving over the years. So we maintain Sunlight Boulevard just like we do other county road within the county, okay? It doesn't get any special treatment. It's a county road, it falls on the same maintenance schedule like Paulson said, as far as resurfacing, roads are inspected, they're graded, what have you, and that's how we determine what road maintenance and what budget we need to take care of those roads every year. So every other road out here belongs to the district. And I spoke with Mr. Norcross before, I met with him, rode around a little bit, and the curbing and things like that. Well, in other county roads, that curbing is acceptable throughout the county. Could it be better? Sure, it could be better, but we all work in confines of a budget, just like you folks do. I have no authority by myself, neither do any of you, it takes three of you to do anything. It takes three of us on the county commission to do anything. So the first step in this is to have a formal request from your district to start these conversations, to put it in front of our board. Of course, I will advocate for you folks up here, because you're in my district, and I will fight as hard as I can, just like I did all over the half a million dollars worth of funding that I brought from the district, and that was a heavy lift. Some of y'all remember that, a couple commissioners that kept beating me back against this from what have you, so, you know, my suggestion would be, as these talks progress forward, I'm going to encourage you five supervisors. To talk to the other four county commissioners and advocate for your position, just like I do with Farm Beer when we go to town, the House here of Washington, that's our job, as elected officials here. Of course, we're bound by sunshine law, just like you folks are. So those conversations are privileged, we can discuss our conversations, you can't go into another county commissioner and say, I talked with Scott, now this is the public, they can look up that information. But you can't share my conversations with them. But you can share your concerns in the reason that you're meeting with them and advocating for this change. I feel that it makes total sense, I feel it's something that, I, I, I'm certainly behind, and I feel some of the other commissioners could get behind and be on a quicker path to getting Schumacher real done. Because, you know, before I was elected in twenty twenty, it was almost done back in two thousand eighteen, and it kind of unraveled, okay? Started back at square one, the complication with Schumacher Road is that that whole road where it's paved has to be shifted thirty feet to the north.
No.
The road is actually not in the right place, okay? So if we're going to pave that road and put in the proper drainage infrastructure and everything, all the utilities have to be moved on the north side of that road, okay? It would be a much simpler project if we could add a little bit more shell base to that, compact it, and put asphalt over the top of it, easy, easy. But this is not that type of project, that whole road has to be shifted thirty feet to the north, we're going to have to, we're going to have to acquire some right-of-way. And we've been in discussions on some of that, for the turnaround at the end, there has to be an appropriate turnaround for garbage trucks, and fire rescue vehicles and what have you, to be able to turn around in a cul-de-sac at the end. So all those things, all those things, as you can imagine, take time, my three-plus years, I've learned that wheels of government move very slowly, possibly slowly. So the quicker that we can get this in front of the county commission, and task our staff of putting this together, the quicker that we can make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any? But I need public. Can I have public comment?
Good morning again, public comment here, Bill Norcross. Uh, I want to thank Scott for spending some time with me today, uh, going up and down, uh, Sun and Lake Boulevard, and I pointed out some of the wonderful features of Sun and Lake Boulevard with the strip potholes and incomplete cement work down the end of the empty station. These are minor things. And the group is that you want to do with Schumacher and Sun and Lake Boulevard, sounds like an excellent deal. Uh, it's going to be an expense for that three miles for Sun and Lake to resurface, so we have to, we really anticipate that, that is a big project, but my concern right now is the present condition of it. And really, if you take a look at some of the areas, person goes off to the white strike, they can go to somebody's house off the road, things like that, it's unlighted, it's areas, so you got, you got problems. And I think it's minor problems, and I think they can be fixed, and before this deal is consumed. Want somebody to do what I say? Appreciate it, thank you.
From Shoe Anchor in Kansas. My question is, I was told there is a possible extension of Schumacher in Harti County, whether that has anything to do with us and/or if that would be under any changes or improvements at this time. Number two. The Sun and Lake original road, the piping or whatever, the tubing under it, where the water was trouble and it was torn up at, was that Columbus, or to Catalina? I was told, and I did read that there was asbestos inside that, inside that. Now, if we're going to turn that over and take their responsibility, and from Sun and Lake, from twenty seven to Albo, should that be looked at to see if in fact, that should not already be countered in on any changes or infrastructure rebuilds? That's it for now.
In reference to your first question, as far as Schumacher would be extended to Harti County, I know that was talked years ago, that's not going to happen. It just, it's, you're, you're talking literally millions of dollars, and I can tell you, I'm on the Harlem Regional Transportation Planning Organization with FDOT, and they work on a five-year plan. And there's a lot of things moving forward, and that's not going to happen. As far as the utilities and the pipe and stuff under the road, that does not belong to the county, that belongs either to the, the utility or what have the district, the county is not in the utility business, so we don't own any of that infrastructure underneath.
So to the point of the utilities, Scott's exactly right, all those are installed by us, we're aware of, it's about three miles of asbestos coated pipe, we're aware of it, it's allowed, it's only out, not the inside. We've replaced seven hundred feet in this last project, we do have plans in our current utility program over the next few years to continue replacing all that pipe to get all that asbestos out of our neighborhood. That's on us, it's our utility, we're aware of it, we're going to do that. We would be doing that even if the county still owns Sun and Lake Boulevard, so we're, we're going to move forward that, it would maybe be easier if we have control of the road, and then we can dig up the pipe. Minimal cross permitting that could cause a lot of issues.
Would that be a budget?
We will, uh, it will be added, a separate patent improvement highlight on the website.
Anything else from the public? Call the vote.
Supervisor Norton? Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
President. Whoops.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we're on to each. Okay, this is you again.
Yes, ma'am, update on our wastewater, and so, uh, work continues, assessments are still being done, we're at the next level of, uh, working, you know, for, uh, skates and. Assessments happening, so that's ongoing out there. We're continuing to work on the product, we sent our product back to D E P, that's the request, they've come back to us, so the list is probably now from the fifty questions down to six questions that are. So we're continuing that process, and that's just going to go back and forth with D E P, and that's tied to the funding. We've reworked the numbers of the funding, so what you're seeing on this slide in your packet, is in our discussions with D E P, the specifics of when we do a special assessment and from legal counsel, we had some meetings right after our last board meeting. There's some recommended steps that we need to do very quickly to address concerns that have bubbled up, even as of late, as this last building cycle, when it comes to tanglewood, commercial parcels, and so on. And it's basically the resolution that we need to get published, up to our citizens, as well as in the paper, and have full notification to specify very detail the establishment of a few of those things, uh, when it comes to this assessment. That is why we, I, I made that decision that this next building cycle, we left the language and the ability for you to send money in, to pay fifteen dollars or whatever you want to pay, but we did not want to go down a road that, that brought any legal pushback to us of mandating that to our residents until we get this resolution published officially. That's why it was more of an illegal, it was a legal necessity, because we will, what we need to do above board, so there's very little pushback at all, that puts this in court on our behalf, we're trying our best to do. You still have the ability, you look at your bill compared to last month, you have the ability to pencil in fifteen dollars, hundred and eight dollars, we left that as an option, but what we're running into, if we just get print on the, the check for the bill. It basically forced you to pay fifteen dollars, and we got about a thousand accounts that do it online, auto draft. Forty thousand people who paid a fifteen, and they could be the people that says, wait a minute, I shouldn't, can't force me, because you got to do this first. So that's why we made that decision, I apologize for the confusion, I apologize for that, we'll snap through, we're going to get that sorted, it's going to get sorted by you all reviewing this, uh, this, uh, resolution. We have, we have, uh, requested rural water experts to do the analysis of tanglewood and the commercial, our calculations to do that. So they're doing that part of the package that we submitted to D E P, they're going to add that into the language, we requested through a castle, a third-party, uh, what do we call it? Garrett can speak to that specifically, but we have basically a third set of eyes, not tied to his firm, not tied to us, that's going to review how the calculation is made, and how we're doing the assessments, and this is all in need of what this resolution requires us to get, and to refine that. And, uh, and lastly, there was a very recent meeting of tanglewood that some misinformation was found, and we're having to, of course, correct that. And I made it very clear to their manager that if they're going to do this, anything about the district, please invite this, we will be the ones speaking. Because that put a lot of our tanglewood residents under the misunderstanding that they don't have to pay, tanglewood hometown America will pay, not them, that's, that's totally wrong. So that, we're, we're doing some, uh, message correction there, working with our tanglewood residents, we'll separate fire, and that will explain it. But I think once we get the resolution out addressing those concerns, and looking for at least in a thirty to sixty day window, we should be able to, based on these other experts telling us, you're good, go forth, uh, we'll be able to get back to. Mandatorily extract that money from checks. We also, the staff here with the checks is, a lot of people wanted to pay one eighty, but we already took out fifteen dollars from that account, a lot of confusion, home calls, so we're all working how we can better display that on the bills. So that's, that's kind of the update, uh, you have a draft resolution, you have the, uh, schematic here, uh, we work for a situation awareness, uh, very quickly. The stuff in red is what we're adding to our plant, we don't have now, if I want to get into weeds, but it's the, uh, the reclamation, it's the septic, and, uh, dumping, or taking stuff out to the dump. Those are the new things that we're going to have in this new plant, that will make this a more, uh, you know, the best technology type plant. And then finally, in your packet there, this is based on, uh, individuals, Mr. Hoffman is a resident, as well as other individuals, sending us information of what they would like to see. We are taking all good ideas, we're packaging these up, potentially give them to the contractor we hired, to see how they can incorporate some of these ideas into this new plant, so we can get fifty percent of it with the capabilities to reduce costs for everyone. So that's all working, uh, and I'll defer to Garrett specifically on the resolution, thank you.
It was a couple of months before this resolution, so.
I, I would, I would say, yeah, because we have two parties that are specifically crunching the numbers for our commercial, uh, as well as that, the language we have to use, and then we have a, a legal counsel, uh, under this analysis, so from all that. So we're, we're still having on the bill to be able to pay, we'll mess. But, uh, we can't mandate, we can't force people to pay until we sort out the.
Okay.
So on this, this one budget sheet that you gave us, that earned fifty thousand, is that really accurate?
That is, that's what we've liked so far.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, even yesterday, people still coming in and saying, add fifteen, add fifteen, add fifteen, we're not forcing anybody, but if they want to pay, they can pay. We're keeping it segregated, it's individual accounts, we track exactly what everyone pays, and, uh, we're, we're fully confident that, uh, once this can set up, everyone will get credited what they paid to us, they, uh, accordingly against the twenty seven hundred.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone has any additional questions for Bob, but just to speak on behalf of the additional, uh, legal counsel that our office recommended the district retain, specifically for the special counsel for this assessment program. There are many zero votes behind this project, eighty-five million dollar total project. One of the issues you run into generally, and we discussed before, is in determining what to charge folks, and what the assessment should be, that analysis is legal. And it takes input from the years before the world to come up with calculations, it's generally, sometimes projects of this size, it's advice for a ring-in analyst to run the figures again, I don't think we're going to need that. But, uh, previous to the district is borrowing large sums of money, tons of bond outstanding, right, I know you all heard that term run around a bit. The firm that was buying counsel for the district all those many years ago, back in the nineties and the two thousands, early twenty teens, when we refinanced our bonds with this, uh, fifth third bank. The district utilized Bryant Miller Olive, they're a specialist local government firm who does bond counsel work, and specializes in these assessments. Our office has a relationship with the attorney that worked on all of that for you guys previously, uh, he moved to me on what the district was planning on doing with the assessment program. And he offered to jump in and be an extra set of eyes when we get to the point when our resolution, you know, we feel like it's ready to go, we can put it in front of an extra set of eyes, uh, for recommendations on. Are, do we have the correct calculations, is there something wrong in, uh, in any notice items that we've published, whether it be the assessment role, the resolution itself? And then in the annual evaluation of the assessment program, if issues come up, definitely, if there's ever a challenge to our assessment program, Chris is there to offer specialized advice to the district. So we had a conversation once we could went very well, so Chris signed up, and, uh, we had to stay, uh, him being all to some degree, not, uh, it was not going to take over the project. Very excited to have him on, and, yeah, looking out a few months before we have a draft resolution, uh, ready to go. But all of that will be published, there will be, uh, tons of blasts coming from the district on that, and then eventually, you know, when this board has to determine, sit down and determine whether they want to pass a resolution, and all the other funding, you all get to do. You know, I'll, I'll review the meeting for to be all known to the staff, and you can play your task to do. Things are going well, and we have a, we have a plan now, and, uh, it's looking good, so.
Thank you.
So these twenty seven, that, that number, that's, that's how I didn't change, right? That's, no, no, the, the term that elevated very quickly is how we're going to, how we're going to do commercial, and a language that, that's the basis.
So would tanglewood, would be different than the rest of something?
No, that, that's just it, our language needs to be clarified, I do say that the one thousand forty-three individual owners for commercial posts pay the twenty seven, and then hometown America is the common areas, we were not that specific in the initial thing we did back then. Mentioned it, we said we're following, we now need to do the following, and that clarification needs to be made, uh, it's more, that's, that's almost like three million. And then all our commercial parcels are coming up to close to four million dollars for their assessment. So it's not the ninety-nine percent of our residents for the twenty seven hundred, it's, you don't get the right number calculation for that four million dollar commercial. It's, you don't get the right number calculation for that four million dollar commercial. Those folks, that hospital, keep this guy very busy. I don't want to do that.
To the point where if an assessment program is deemed invalid, what, you know, the stick that the board carries is that we have to pay all the money back. And the city of Ocala just had to pay that back. Uh, its citizens for assessment programs, it's, you know, fifty million dollars. And the way we want to fund this project is through ongoing revenue, right? We want to build the plant and then fund a large portion of the plant through the revenue we derive from the plant. Derive revenue from something that you can't build, you have to pay back all the money that you tried to collect to build the thing personally. So, uh, given the particular way Vaz wants to finance this, uh, that's when we said, hey, we need another set of eyes to come in. And just for your benefit, for the system's benefit, uh, because Chris will be working solely on the special assessment work, it's recoverable as a cost of the project. So we can include it in the cost of the assessment program. So that's not going to come out of any district's coffers. So, uh, yeah, so we have a plan. It's, uh, it'll.
So this is just a bracket, what is you defining?
Yes, sir. Right.
And those are the topics. Yeah. Those are what we need to make sure it's in our resolution that right now we have touched on that language. We need to firm up that language. So that's, that's kind of it. We got a draft, uh, request for qualification slice from Lake Blasted towards shape that. So when we get ready to pull that trigger, we will get that to the person that maybe goes in this forest. So again, we're doing all that, we're behind the scenes, we just got to put it in the right order, the resolution and the other things. It's not going to delay the funding, it's not going to delay the execution, the timeline of the project. It may eventually shift one or two months to the right, the collection of some of the revenue, the assessment money. We've already planned to do that for fifteen years, adding two months to that.
Exactly.
We'll have a sound assessment, which is what we need.
Okay.
That's it on ways forward.
All righty. Now we're to streetlights.
On streetlights, yes. Uh, this is an ongoing discussion, an issue. We got back to finding the numbers from our D Power. Now, D Power is kind of the controller of any streetlights. We could put a streetlight in at our cost, fix your end at our cost, and then we would have to be putting up the power lines, we could do that. Very costly. D Power came back to us, we gave them a, an area, there's a map in your packet that shows the areas they looked at. Right. There, so the areas in red, we gave D Power, these are our most, uh, the darkest areas, um, as well as the most safety, uh, issue areas that we come up with right now. One, two, three, and four in red. So there are the numbers that D Power came back and was on. So, so it's basically the, uh, Duron, quasi-Duron, I know the villa, uh, the, and then the two quadrants on the north side, uh, northeast side of, uh, a light, uh, Boston, that area up there where there's a lot of construction going on, a lot of construction going on. So the four areas, we, uh, D Power came back to us with some numbers. The first product, I'll show you here very quickly, this is kind of what they give us from the areas. So this is that, so they give us a product that gives us an overhead shot, it shows all the lights, that's the span of coverage that he likes to do. It shows you how many they recommend best case scenario. We don't have to use all those, but best case scenario, just those three streets, it comes out that thing less than thirty lights or something like that, twenty some odd lights. Uh, and, and they would do the installation and so on. Where it comes, I have all those products, not in your packet, but we have that. The way we can reduce costs there is if we think we need to just maybe do all the sacks, do the intersections, we can eliminate the streetlights and do those ways there. There's ways to shape that to get it to a more manageable cost. But I want to show you the best case scenario that the D Power has to start with this number. So that's the product. And we'll get these products for, uh, getting it out to HOAs so they can better explain it to their residents over their meetings. So go back to your first, this is the D Power summary. Basically, for right now, in those four areas, they're recommending eight new lights. This is the pole, fixture, installation, and so on. For them to do all that, it basically comes up to thirty-six thousand dollars a year indefinitely. Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, a year indefinitely. Uh, that's not really good businesses. Uh, they, they do everything, they put them in there to maintain them and they put them to them, but we basically never stop paying the installation costs and the cost of eviction. It's an indefinite timeframe. So the way we worked around it in the past, that we took that option number two, where we paid the construction side of it, laying the line, slapping that construction in, and then the financing is for ten years, the pole and the fixture. And then after ten years, that cost goes away, we just pay for power. That's kind of what the model we're on right now for our existing light network. That's a big heavy lift for us in the beginning because I just see that two of those eighty lights, it's about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we did them all. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we pay them upfront and then boom, they, they install everything and then we're just paying the eighteen thousand dollars, uh, for ten years and then it dips down to just power after ten years. You basically can walk away from the contract, they take the lights away, but if we stopped, it dips down from financing the product to just power after ten year payment. And these are those calculations, as you see there, a lot of our lights are just, uh, we're paying power, we've already paid off the construction costs. So the issue, uh, we have right now is that for, for me to move forward, I have to add it for D Power, I need to know the appetite forward of, do we want to try to do a more refined list of amount of lights, construction cost down, pay it out of our street account that we have, get it installed, and then over years, we just do a little bit every year, we finance fifty thousand dollars as infrastructure lights. So that could be the number we work with. Or if there's any interest into doing the, the full meal deal, we don't pay anything this time to go, but then we're stuck with thirty-six thousand dollars a year for X amount of things.
But this, if I'm reading this, this doesn't include any lights out on the west side of Duron, such as Devil Beach West, San Benito, San Bruno.
Well, it does, the, the Duron collective is still owning that schematic of all the lights. Right now, uh, Petal and Myrtle have good coverage for the.
It's on the east side.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, what, okay, to your point on the west side of the Gulf Forest, no, not this year, that is, uh, unit west sixteen west.
Yes.
That's next year's focus area, that's D Power's going to give us lights there. So this is just the bubble inside the Gulf. You know, that's what they're giving me, the number of lights for that interior bubble of, uh, yeah, where number four is. That's all the lighting in that bubble.
That's like San Ignacio.
Yes, sir, yeah. Yes.
Isn't your, but, but you guys, Magnolia doesn't have any?
Like, oh, yeah, it's two right now lights. They're needing, basically, that happy show in twenty-four.
Is it, is it doing the same way the new construction is?
Unit ten is, we're post, that new construction is, yeah.
And where is that on this?
Uh, that's number one, yellow.
One yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, number one, yellow, that's the next phase of, uh, next year's number. D Power contacts out at a hundred lights and a sea of basic hurricanes. So for them, the new one, two, three, and four, the next out, we can expand them out to other areas and limit the lights in those first four areas. I, I, they're already there, they're digging up the ground, they're installing it, let's just get it done. Check it off the list and move on to the next area. We can make on this and say, just go get a light, hold sack, light in the street. They still got to run the line all the way down the street and then recharge this double to come back and add lights, tap into that line.
On, on your list, right here.
Yes, sir.
Where is, yeah, the seven, two, twenty-four?
That's in, uh, twenty-two, twenty-five, unit sixteen west, what I'm calling.
Well, there's that brown one and then there's that one.
Yeah. One is, uh, or that darker yellow, I chose two.
Red, one is Angelo Circle.
Yes. Red one, two, and three are two years out.
There's not that many residents out there compared.
Oh, there is, no, I'm with you, yeah, you're right.
Just kept saying, you know, there's a lot more residents on yellow one than there is in red one.
Yes.
And a lot more in red too. I don't, I don't really understand why we focused on those as being the critical area.
Well, those, all those areas are, are areas where we have folks that we're building more and they have no, for those purposes.
One and two.
Yeah, all those.
Unit one is, you got a lot more on unit one than you do on unit, red one and red.
But unit one has that, the most free lights right now, that would be almost, you know, three, four thousand dollars a one shot if we did it all. That's why I didn't want to put it in this year's numbers. We don't have that budgeted right now. We have budgeted the four red ones right now. I'd, I'd say budgeted, we have a plan that we can execute those and there's existing light networks that we're expanding. We're going into the yellow.
There's because there's existing lights.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, the yellows are very little existing lights, so they're.
I know, I know. Just so we know.
So it's eighty, two thousand twenty-five.
Right.
Eight lights. It would be more because that's not counting the number four circle. You know, probably more like a hundred and ten, twenty-four lights.
What would two twenty-five and two twenty-six?
Those are going to all be in that same range, about five lights. There's just nothing happening.
You're talking?
It's going to have been about three hundred thousand dollars a year of destruction for the next three years.
With sustainable partners.
We could, we could reach into that realm. Uh, we have, we could all ask, uh, when it comes to lighting, long term, yeah. Because this would dip out of our street reserve and that's just going to take some time to replace that.
Three hundred thousand a year for the next three years.
To do exactly all that, that's over four hundred, four hundred lights, is your. We don't plus a million dollars, I don't move this area. Yeah, but again, there's no financing, there are some ransom researching, it's not going to get nowhere near that number, it's probably not in that range. But we could look at sustainability partners.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it seems to me like that has been a good partnership as far as the meters programs. I think they proved themselves as being what they say they were.
No issues so far. Very accommodating, they, they work with our team. It's a good product, meters are all working, functioning, no issues at all at that point, yes. They're the ones that, out of just a simple discussion, gave us the electric vehicle package. Not that we're doing much with it right now, but they gave us that right now. So for me to reexpect it and say, do you have anything with streetlights, we'll see what we see. Chris is going to spread it out over, you know, ten years.
Sure, I understand. But it's more, it's a little bit more powerful to us as far as what we would have to.
Definitely. I mean, this is exactly the kind of slow roll, street lighting, as possible.
But, you know, but I think it's worth a look myself personally, I, now, I'm only one voice.
No, I agree.
So basically, we're saying, we pay three hundred thousand a year and then we'll also have to pay two thousand dollars to, I'm taking that.
Yes, the thousand is just construction costs.
Right, then we pay eighteen thousand. So basically, it's nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand and fifty-four thousand.
Yes. Because that, that, because that eighteen thousand is just, only found that in ten years.
Right.
For the most part, we're all going to be living eighteen thousand dollars per year, per living those lights, I mean, definitely, basically.
That's a lot.
It, it is a lot. So just needs to focus, do you want me to reel back the construction number? I definitely can reach out sustainability. If you want to reel back that construction number, we could get that, I'll use the example of Magnolia, we could get that area, we could get that area probably to, you know, uh, thirty, thirty thousand dollar cost by just getting, again, I don't, I don't like it, hit the cul-de-sac, hit the intersections, hit Navy Center Street all of day. So we could do that, get some lights, get some lights in the safety areas that we're concerned about, but it doesn't power them all up like that.
Nine hundred thousand, look at that many lights right now.
Yes.
Why don't we talk five years as opposed to three years? We stretch it out a little bit, knowing, because it's a lot of.
Oh, you're, you're okay, yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying here.
That's right. Why are we talking three years? Much less lights, sustainability is the only thing to do that for it, but it still provides opportunity for us to now and spread it out. If we can get partnerships, that's fine, but I, I couldn't support three hundred thousand dollars for the next three years.
You want me to take that, that plan right there and go five-year plan? I mean, we have, we have a longer plan, I did three-year snapshot, because if you look at your map, we didn't do anything now west on both. We didn't do anything on the north side, uh, we didn't do anything in the, the, the other areas, we, we need to. So, uh, we do have a, a long-range plan. It's not three hundred thousand dollars a year, it's more like one fifty after the third year, but the first years hits the major areas of concern and then we start powering the streets up.
Southern Lake Boulevard, it's Southern Boulevard itself, a hundred and thirty-five of three years, right?
Uh, that's till Cortez, yeah. We don't, it's not really powered the rest of the way, we need to.
How much do we need to have for this year's one?
Eighty, eighty aside for this year. So we all will get us right now, if we did the construction, would be probably the Magnolia, one of those bulbs would be. We would do about twenty-five lights.
Personally, not knowing what a budget's going to look like, I would say we budget it. And then for the budget that you're working on, put the correct number in.
Sure.
That's going to be every year that we can probably, if we can digest, that's personally how. I mean, if we, it's not budgeted, we're spending a lot of money that's not budgeted.
Yeah, no.
Right, just getting a little.
Right. And while you may be able to do Magnolia place, I see a lot more residents instead of San Ignacio, probably the need of lights, more of it.
More critical area of darkness.
Yeah.
I would say our, our, pick the worst place for the most, place that needs it the most. Do it for as many units as you can. It's a hundred, sir, if you go from eighty in the budget to two fifty, three hundred.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
And I think you'd want to still.
Still like Southern. It's a state of the.
Yes, please.
I think we should.
Their stuff is not.
And then come back with us.
But is this to really just set aside that whole finance everything option with D Power?
I think so.
That's off the table, I don't need that to do that with anything. All my discussions with Duke is going to be, we will pay for construction and installation, we'll just pay for the fixtures and lights for ten years. That's the discussion that you all have for it. Okay, that's what I mean. That removes a lot of the calculations, so it's like, and then we'll have sustainability partners, so no actual, no installation, and we'll bring back to you what we can do for eighty to hundred this year, bring back to that number and no installation. Okay, all right. No issues then?
Okay.
Public, you want to do that?
Yeah. Comment on the lights? Yes.
Daniel Garvin, forty-five, Calatrava. My question is, um, a lot of construction going on, why can't the new lights be included or spread, spent, put on to the contractors that are building? And, uh, you know, yes, we'd have to take the hit where, where it's already done, but it would make sense to me that if they're going to build there, there, or there, that the lights that are required for that would be in their, their construction.
Sure. Usually that comes up in a development agreement that we would have with the builders, since we had a very prominent in the southern homes, it's kind of a, not, right now, they're doing collective. And since we don't control our zoning and our high level county restrictions, we have to go down the road with county getting a ballot to force that on a builder to be developed. If we were to make a development agreement for a section, I'll use the unit twelve as an example, we definitely can mandate there, because this one guy, one builder, we can say this, but we'll have, but when we do this, we'll build. But when we do this, builds like we're going right now, we have very little power to, this guy put a light in, that guy does it, this guy does. It is doable, but we would have to change a lot of power that the county gives us. And we can work towards that. We, we are working towards that. It's not going to happen any time, probably in the next one month. It takes a lot of time.
Yeah, cause it, a lot of the areas that we see, like Cortez, concentrated.
Agreed, agreed. We're, 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 we're working for that. Uh, just as, as time is going to be, where now it's really going to be just for government to try to do that.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Any more public comment?
Don't you make your eighty three mechanics. I have a question that wasn't a public comment on the water. I have two things. You charge us if we don't have a legally signed document. My understanding, nothing's totally signed at this point. And will the new residents that you've anticipated, three to five thousand, whatever, be assessed the same amount? We have been paying or will be paying where that amount of say five thousand new people in less than ten years, will that readjust any payment's amount? One other thing I'm out of here. Since this is a February to February, you accommodated the billings not to reflect January assessment. So next year, when it's a February, it'll do an annual amount paid unless you're going to roll it all back to January. Okay? And if I'm paying and I say, okay, well, till it's signed and everything's legal and done, if I stop paying, I've paid thirty dollars. Will that charges step in pain? And if it's not a situation where they could have been charged to us, will that make a difference? And on the lighting, how about making sure it's in the budget? We know it's due and if we're sorry, but we'll do, do still do the repair and update on lights and other things. Cause I know that's part of what they do. Thank you.
The Duke, yes, once we sign a contract with Duke, do this, they maintain a power. They'll fix them at our request in the time.
Your first question about should you be charged right now? The answer is no. And I was addressed that earlier. Um, if folks would like to pay some amount of money right now, they're welcome to. Uh, we're keeping that in a separate, identical account so that it's not getting, uh, but if you stop paying next month, there will be no. Uh, to your question regarding, will new residents be charged differently? The way it works is there are several, actually probably a couple dozen different categories of parcels that we're looking at, right? So we have, you know, residential parcels, right? So you might have a single family home. Uh, we have commercial parcels in this area. You have a big hospital. You have a, you know, a school, small preschool. Category of parcel is going to be assigned a different amount. And the way we determine that is what is the benefit derived by that, let's say, to a property based on improvement. Uh, there are, there are many unimproved parcels in Southern Lake. And I think that's what you're referencing when, as people come and move in, will they be assessed more? At this point, we have to base our assessment on the current status of properties. There are certain fees that will be realized by, let's say there are unimproved parcels that don't have the infrastructure that's connected to the way you are in the land. Those are different types of fees. Those are called connection fees. Uh, and those, we're going to pay those. Uh, that's a cost that will be paid by them, not community generally. But for the initial assessment, it'll be based on what the area of the land is. And, you know, we have a team of those that make sure that's there. That'll come up to board. Uh, plenty of, you need to comment on those things. Uh, that will happen.
Thank you. I appreciate the reply.
Yeah, absolutely.
Add-on items?
Uh, you guys had two correspondences in there just so you're aware. We talked at school, we talked to the, uh, the management, changing some people's names. This was just the, uh, the school one. I was asking them to put a fence in for the area of our destination. Nothing, that's right there. Nothing add-on, nothing that can work.
Okay. Petitions and commissions? Communications? Okay. Staff reports? Clubhouse, golf?
Good morning. Just real quick with us, uh, we're still going to try to get, uh, fourteen turtle fixed, the rip wraps. Um, trying to get all the heads cleaned up, get ready for airification, uh, coming up at the end of April. Um, we probably in two weeks will go ahead and start getting, uh, some of the back tees out of the way for the airification. And we do plan on, uh, airifying all the fairways, verticut and, uh, fairways and then all the tee boxes and collars as well. Um, we did top dress yesterday on turtle and, uh, doing deer run this morning. And then continue to, uh, push with, uh, granny where we did have a hydraulic leak last week on, uh, turtle run. We did find it. Uh, we got that repaired as well. And of course, uh, got the path, uh, by the driving range. And other than that, we're just, uh, getting ready to start mowing. Everything's starting to grow. We're going to try to get all the Bahia cut this week and all the rough cut as well. We do have a couple of junior tournaments coming up. While that might, um, discuss that. And other than that, that's, we're going to try to get air to pass on the greens next week, uh, on both courses.
Okay.
Now you're very capable of doing the green work that you have to do here, but my question, somebody asked me this yesterday, clubhouse. Who is going to check your?
Well, I mean, I've been talking with Trune as well. Mike Stevens, he plans on coming down as well.
So there is, I mean, I'm sure you're capable of doing this hopefully, but I mean, somebody is going to come down and, and we'll see it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They've, they've seen the proposal as well.
I was going to say, why, why has the management of not expressed any interest or concern with the district, or at least to the void myself about what's going on? Does anybody know why? You guys.
As far as what? The green construction?
Well, as far as the situation that we have with greens on deer that we know we have to redo and on turtle that we might have to redo, that certainly is going to be conversation. Why is the management of your company not showing a basis or something?
Well, I think they weren't happy to come down. I, I think the biggest thing is.
My question is, should we, we don't need to invite them. I would think they would be interested enough to show on your own.
Do they know the conditions?
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes, sir.
I mean, when we had a problem with the, uh, two years ago, we had a problem with the hail and the, your Ronin assembly members never.
Jeff Cap.
Visited us.
Yep.
And, and went through the explanation of what was going on. We lost the greens here and, uh, I'm just, nobody has shown interest.
It's, 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 they're not interested. It's just, you know, we did the estric test again, uh, in three years ago, we did the estric test and I mean, i- it's evident that the greens need to be rebuilt. Our goal on turtle run this year is to deep time the greens and go as deep as we can. Kind of get the, the drainage there. I, I mean, if everybody, they, they, across the portfolio, whether it's Trune, it doesn't matter what management company, PJ, National, they lost a whole golf course. They're redoing their.
My point is, not that, my point is, I have concerns from the management of your company. I'm just curious.
But again, I would have, on top of what you just, the places lost. Why are all of these other persons in the area that are not?
Well, first of all, you guys mentioned Pinecrest, Pinecrest in twenty sixteen. They were regrasped. Rodney's greens and River Greens was redone. Jason, the golf hammock just redid their greens. So.
So age of the greens. They redid them. What did they do? Did they go to US?
They did not. They scraped them. Well, Rodney went down ten inches at his. Rodney came over. I spoke with him when we were getting ready to do it. Rodney did your greens in twenty sixteen, the note deal. He tried that they needed to be welded out and they needed to be drained better. I can show you pictures from two thousand and six when somebody else was here, when it was Kitz and Aerials, pictures that you guys had the issues in two thousand and six as well. The greens construction is not satisfactory. I'll, I'll tell you what, when you rebuild your greens and compare, and that's the whole reason why we started in the fall talking about the drilling field. It is that, that is a good option to do with turtle run and to extend the life of turtle run. I'm going to go six inches on the thirtieth on turtle run to try to get more air movement and more water there. But Rodney built those greens and Rodney will tell you that they're still push-up greens on turtle run. And everybody that has push-up greens are going to fight it. And if you bring in rigs on mix, it helps it. But this is, these greens are native source.
I mean, I'm fine. We have to do, I understand all that. I'm just shocked that your company, who manages this? As a show of debate, you guys have, and I, you guys were, right? Opening from above their levels has shown any concern or interest?
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, no, I believe they haven't been to, but I know Mr. Rhodes has been down and I visited with him several times. We've met with Boz as well during those visits. I mean, their time schedule doesn't always necessarily allow them to be here, but, but they have been concerned. Mr. Rhodes has been concerned. He's been on the property. Um, you know, he's, he, Mike Stevens has been involved. You guys have all met Mike Stevens before. He's, he's been through that whole process with us. They've been since the very beginning. Uh, they just haven't necessarily been to a board meeting. Okay, moving on.
The greens were in good shape from the time that you got here. And we, why didn't we go forth and say, replace the damn greens? Instead, you didn't say, replace the greens. Don't start that. Not in total. You did not say in total, we need to do what we're going to do now on deer. We didn't.
We, we did.
We did not say that we were going to replace the whole greens.
I, I'll agree with you. We talked about the first four to begin with, okay? We started with nine holes before we went. The, the four greens that we talked about originally, when we originally talked about, this was, these were the ones we fought. We also talked about the option of drilling. The first year I was here, Mr. Herrick, I did discuss that we need to put a fund together and look at, rethink and start thinking about regrasping these greens. And that was just primarily based upon the estric test that I did the very first year I was here, the very first winter.
It went under the radar because it should have been something that was absolutely essential to the wellness of these greens. We have spent, we've gone, we're in four years now, totally unacceptable. We had one good year. That was because we had excellent weather.
Yes, sir.
And what are we going to do next year? What, what, uh, we're going to replace, I understand that. What about turtle?
We have, Mr. Herrick, we have to practice. We have to airify them and, and.
How are we going to do that? The turtle is not going to be in the same shape it is next year.
I'm, I find as deep as I can. I'm going six inches.
Is that going to be satisfactory?
There's no guarantees with the weather, what you're, you're.
What if we overseed it?
I, I'm all for it. I can, I can, listen, we, we can go eight pounds. We can go light on them and, and have your coverage. You look at the way one, two, three and four are right now, overseeding, they're better. But it was like.
I know, because I wanted overseeding and you convinced me that we shouldn't be overseeding because all it does is feed the need.
You were talking about fairways, sir. You never mentioned greens to me, ever. You talked about fairways.
Here we go, splitting errors. Thank you very much. That's all I need to say. I'm done, sir.
Just to wrap this up. If we have to redo turtle, just tell them.
We definitely, we definitely should. It comes down to the funding.
It's up to us to decide when and how much, right?
Right. And, and I know I brought up the discussion when we've been doing our five-year capital for the last three or four years. And I, and I know I've mentioned that we need to plan for this ahead of time because obviously it was something that needed to be done. So we need to plan to do that. Absolutely. We need to plan to do that. We're going to do everything we can this summer to, to get us through however long we need to get to before the, you know, that is approved and we move forward with that.
Higher, having thirty-six holes.
I agree. Believe it's not very fun on our end either.
I mean, playing golf is just going to be fun playing golf now and hearing about. Hearing about criticism from like fellow golfers, it's not very much fun.
I'm, I'm, I believe, I understand.
I wouldn't enjoy playing golf.
I understand. I mean, my door.
Do you realize that our leadership is consistent of, it has two hundred and fifty astronomers?
We're, we're definitely aware of that. I'm definitely aware of that.
Do you have any choice?
What?
We need to fix this quickly as far as.
And we are on board with you. We're a hundred percent on board with all of that. All right, I'll move on. Um, just an assessment of our February numbers. So just, that's just kind of pre-warned that we were going to struggle a little bit in February to have, um, some rainouts. Um, I did mention that it's, it's not always, um, how much rain we get, but it's when, when it rains. So we lost two full Sundays, um, due to some heavy rain, which severely affected, um, our rounds and revenue. Early on that month and then, you know, towards tailing off the end of the month, um, obviously conditions, you know, started to affect our rounds as well, which actually bleeding over into March. But primarily, our numbers that, those couple of rain, rain days probably cost us sixty thousand dollars in green fee revenue. I mean, that's a pretty good assessment. So that way you see our rounds were down by day. Our member rounds actually went up in, in February. The adding rounds were actually fairly up. I did notice a mistake in last year's number. That was from the ladies member. We ran all the rounds into our tournament. So there was a hundred and eighty rounds played, but ninety were member rounds and ninety were public. So this year's ladies member guess was actually larger than last year. You can see, like I said, the public rounds did show an eighteen percent decrease. Um, the majority was on those two rainouts. Obviously it tailed off at the end of the month. So we showed a twelve percent decrease overall in green fee revenue year over year. Uh, and that, with the rounds going down, it kind of affects everything driving around, pro shop revenue. All of that decreases as well with less traffic. On the expense side, um, you can see that the COGS number, I mean, it was spread at sixty percent for the month, um, which is good. Little bit of labor on the golf ops. Obviously with the two rainout days, if we don't have all the people there, we don't need as much staff. So we, we do cut people and send them home. So we were able to find some savings there. Uh, same expense side, um, the golf maintenance expense, I just want to use your. On that, that in our early order program at the beginning of the year, we did have some purchase power. Um, and that is the pre-emergent that we actually were able to fit all into our early order program and it was paid for ahead of time. So that is not in any decrease in what we did on the golf course. We just prepaid for it earlier in the year. We just prepaid for it earlier in the year. Major events over thirty days. Obviously, we had our MGA election day member member. We had the Lady of Grace tournament, which brought in about $40,000 in revenue. And last week, we had our men's member guest.
What, what, I counted, right?
Players, players, 102, 104 players.
How's that compared to three?
It's fairly close. I want to, if you compare it to a couple of years ago, I think it's down a little bit and it's down just a few from last year. It's not a, was not a drastic number. But definitely, it was slightly down from last year. We got the Couples Championship. We got the State Elks Tournament, the PGA two-day tournament. We do have the AJGA tournament. We have the Gala Tournament. We have the Highlands County Citrus Grove Tournament. And we moved the Choices Tournament from May through as account to we are closing Turtle, or excuse me, closing Deer. Under the restaurant side, so obviously, if rounds go down, we typically lose some business in the restaurant. But the restaurant fare quite well year over year. Revenue is pretty flat year over year. Network sales are flat year over year. Our total sales is, I mean, it's up just a little bit. I think if we had those 800 rounds or whatever, obviously, we would have surpassed last year. So overall, that was just year over year.
I'm sorry, the restaurant, the numbers I'm looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, says that we lost $7,000 here in $93 in February versus last year's, we made $8,209, so that's like $16,000. So how do we do? I'm not sure.
Yes, revenue's flat, but obviously, we had increases in, our labor went up probably 10% with minimum wage increases. Expenses, obviously, is not up.
The restaurant really was not good.
Overall, losing that extra revenue, correct?
It was okay.
Well, I don't think that's okay, but.
With the restaurant, unless I'm mistaken, this is through February, you want to pay your money this month, and then you're going to lose every month after that. I would say the restaurant is not improving at all, based on what I'm seeing.
Are you comparing year over year or are you comparing year to date?
Year to date, the restaurant, we down $87,503, we have $22,000. Like I said, March, you probably have a good shot at making it past all.
Yeah, correct. And obviously, we'll, we'll discuss March. We had several big events that didn't happen this year with the, that we ran for year over year over year. They did not run that. That's a two. We did move a golf tournament later in the year that has now rescheduled. But there are some challenges there too, but we'll discuss that one next week.
Unless you pick up $30,000 in March, I'm not going to know where you're going to get my work to do. But we'll see.
So when you're looking, I'm assuming you're looking at this page. That's the one. So, so we've made some changes on that page that Mr. Boz and I, and I think we're going to need to sit down, the three of us, and we can go, I think we can answer your questions. That, you know, obviously, we've had that discussion before when we're looking at this, but I think on our year.
We're all the same, we're all the same glide bet as the past year.
Correct.
We're, we were $8,000 negative last year this time. We are raising the same number this year this time. The only, I call it a glimmer, if you look at the, you know, year-to-date restaurant chart, you notice that we started very high on negatives, $27,000, and it's been down consistently to this month. Now, still $8,000, I'm with you, but it shows progress to the benefit of the team there that are willing away at buy monthly, negative, and it's come down to $27,000 for this month at $4,000. So it's going this way. And we're hoping that March, revenue, and yes, it'll be a negative dip for the summer, but it's, it's a dynamic from my perspective of, I don't have a mentality to worry about. I'm looking at, we get consistent progress and efficiency and funding and issues of management. And we keep that only consistent rather than this, this up and down. It's not the best, but it's better than last year to go with the parallels. Because of consistent progress.
But this number's not right. $14,000 versus $8,000 year before. How can you tell me that?
No, the progression by the beginning of the year was on a better trend than last year. So it'll bear fruit in the future.
Yes, I can't wait to see.
Okay. I'd say it's different than last year, looking at the year, the ups and downs of our budgeting restaurants all over the place. There was no trends. It was not controlled. It was not managed. I'm sorry that it wasn't done appropriately.
It's got nothing to do with the budget. It's exactly.
You're exactly right. If you look at the trend of our restaurant revenue as well as expenditures, our negatives are going to the positive a lot quicker than last year. And we shall see through potential March, April, May.
I have one other question or point to bring up on your, this is my favorite subject, rate for the public. We can talk about it over and over again, how we need to raise that to have any chance of really doing well. I just got the numbers, I'll give you this. Rate for members, 5%, right? This year. The average rate for the public is going up 3%. So if you average rate that we're charging the public, I'm keeping up with the rate that we charge the membership. I'm just picking it up.
Yeah. And again, we'll have to, you have to categorize because the member guest, the member guest rate went up 0%. And then we do a lot of those.
You guys have an excuse.
Well, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a point. So we actually lowered resident rate, lowered by probably 10% in prime time. That's what's really dragging that number down is, is the actual resident rate that the board approved last year.
I'm not even talking about, yeah.
Right. And that includes the decrease on the residents.
What's that? I don't know what you're comparing.
Well, the resident rate falls in the public rate, which was lowered 10% year over year. The resident, the resident rate is included in the public rate, and that was lowered 10% year over year.
It's one of the highest contributing factors.
Correct.
More so than if you employ a new group.
Correct. Which is why it has a more dramatic effect because it's, it's one of our.
It's not hurting.
Well, if you go down 10%, that's why we're only up 3% total. So all the rest of the rates went up dramatically, 3%. The decrease 10% on the resident rate is, is dragging that number 10%. Almost 10%.
That's that wrong.
Correct.
Yes, I want to say.
It went from 49 to 45. So it's 8%, 10%?
It does every year.
Correct. But last year, when we went through the rate, I, that rate was actually at the same, and the board directed that number to go down $4.
Now, one time, I would love to see a point brought up to you guys. And you say, you know, you're right, work on this instead of giving me a damn excuse for everything.
Well, I mean, we've, we've gone up. The, the numbers are there.
I'm just telling, and I'm.
Right. I'm just, I'm just labeling the facts.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
That video shoot, Joe.
Oh, it went very well. So I did just, Boz, did I forward you that video?
I have seen it.
I, I, all right. So I just got the video the last couple of days. I will, which they did a shoot for us. So they did their commercial, which I have not seen, but they, you know, so they actually paid us a fee to be here, and they gave us a flyover, hole number one and a hole number two. And I think they got very good, and I will definitely forward those on. Something we could throw on our website, I think, I'm pretty good. So I did just get those in and had not seen their actual commercial. Very professional group that they work with. It was actually pretty easy to do. It's really simple.
Why are they going to be done in the restaurant?
So, yeah, I just spoke with them last week, I think. They have our colors, and we are in the queue here coming up where they're actually going to build our panels. It'll be May or June. I don't have a date yet.
We're going to build one back?
We're not. They, they're, they're building them and they'll bring them here. We're in the queue. I, I don't have an installation date, but we're scheduled May or June.
We had a presentation on the way to take that half room and feel the shrinkage in while you do stationizing. You have some groups that close to the opening room.
Uh, the banquet room?
You are, it's part of our budget discussion this year. I'll add it.
Probably going to be part of the conversation.
Better say. Have your name.
Yeah, currently, we just, a little foldable thing that we use to divide the room, but I mean, it could be.
I mean, there are times you have service, and instead of closing that whole room down, it's really close.
Yeah. We, correct. And we do that in the, in the wintertime for all our Christmas parties. We split it up and sell both halves and so, but yeah.
This is, President, pardon me. I, I concur with the diagnosis on the greens on Turtle. And I, and I tell you what, what I hear is a lot of people are having problems with the greens this year. Down in April, they, can you believe it? It was cool weather, cloudy weather. They've had problems. In O'Callaghan, they had all kinds of problems. The villagers up there are screaming on Google, one course is going to be completed, being in a play for $4.6 million, which is nice. And there's a lot of other golf courses that call it, except therefore, they're not being maintained, and they're raising hell up. Brilliant. And so I highly support what you're going to do. My question is, and I'd like to have some support on this, as a member and other members that are on the bubble right now, should we come back next year? We lose 10? That's a lot of money. That's a lot of daily fees coming in. Because you take $5,000, $30 green fees, you divide that in, how many people are watching that front door? So membership is highly respected and encouraged. And my, my thought is that make sure when you do this work, I don't care if you have a picture or some kind of information, what you're doing, what's a, feel better, comfortable, and want to come back. Because really, hey, a lot of people, I've been here for 20 years and I've seen it all. Believe me. And I'm just tired of it. People are tired of it. People are tired of the problems. And I think if we solve them, right, then the deep training, maybe on Turtle, they may not have to do it. Whatever, but please, inform the membership as you progress. You had a nice demonstration here, what you're going to do. You could send those out, add information out to the people, and we'd make it feel a hell of a lot better.
Okay. Maybe this, name, okay. I want to add, now, he plays most first. At this point in time, a lot of people coming into play are very cognizant of the other prices at other golf courses. And if you want to raise 3% or 5% or whatever, you're going to need increase, and it'll go up, and people playing will go down. Because everybody's saying, oh, it's so-and-so here, it's so-and-so there, and we got to do here. And it does make a difference. Thank you. Done noted. Anybody else?
I just wanted to address a little bit on the restaurant, if possible. There's not a lot of restaurants that are worth eating at. Unfortunately, we've got some of the fast food coming in that's going to hurt that also. But, and I don't like to name names, but Watering Hole's always got a monster crowd because the food's good. And yet, you got to drive all the way down here. I don't know what we're doing, because I don't see it, but then again, I don't see it a whole lot, about reaching out to the community of our restaurant. People forget about, because if we mention it to them, oh, maybe we eat there. Oh, I forget all the time. I, I don't know what we're doing advertising to bring the outside public in because that could change the whole picture of the, of the, because the food's good.
The food is good.
If that, that, you know, that's something that we can control. But anyway, I, there, there must be some way to advertise or offer some kind of offers, whatever it may be, free kid, you know, if you bring, whatever it might be, to bring the traffic in. Because when you talk to friends about going to eat somewhere, so there's not, there's not a lot around here. So if we could become the restaurant, it would be, it could make a big difference in what takes place. I heard mentioned here before with the restaurant, that the golf crowd keep people away because of the noise and the laughter and, and, you know, I don't say anybody shouldn't have that, but I don't know, is there, is there another place to have the bar crowd so the restaurant can attract the people who are paying? I think, I think that's what we talked about here before.
Has.
But I, but what I see, formerly, nobody, if you don't know, I'm from the restaurant business. Okay. The, my whole career, the, the price level has to be attractive. Price level has to be reasonable, and, and the food's got to be good. And people got to know about it. And I think the people knowing about it is what I want to argue about. Let me just offer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just add one last comment. The food is excellent. I think that we're not managing our seats well enough. You come there and you tell a person that they have a two and a half hour wait and it's 4:30, they have a table reserved at 6 or 6:30. That needs to be much better, Michael. Please. I've seen that three times since the last board meeting, and it's, people walk away and they just don't understand. I mean, even during season, you go to a 5 o'clock seating and a 7 o'clock season, which we tried and worked. You have to be able to rotate your, your tables better. Please. General counsel? I'm sorry.
One other comment. Wednesday, we got a problem. Coming from the restaurant on Wednesday, I see this, I see one line of the bar, 10 or 12 people, anything to be drinking, I'm thinking, what kind of restaurant do I want to be at? So I think we're more armed for ourselves than, you know, three rounds of wait to. Three rounds of waiting to rectify these things.
Yeah, you're going to maybe put a bar in the back room, put the golfers in the back room. A portable bar like you do for member guests and just. Then we don't have the kegs. We, we, solid plan. It's just not going. Uh, it doesn't. Any more discussion? General counsel?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick update. Our last meeting, you mentioned that. Avanti case with our outside counsel Cliff Rhodes. Had adopted a couple, last couple of weeks here. We negotiated a new case management order with opposing counsel. Set some deadlines that we're working with on getting discovery. Case had a conference call that we had with Cliff in with the opposing counsel. Where we discussed, you know, where we see the next few months of the case going. I feel confident we can get discovery done in the next four to six months. That's a portion of litigation where we pull from the other side, responses from the other side. It'll be tight. It'll be a tight window, particularly getting decisions done on both sides. But that is, that's the new timeline we have for discovery of the case. And opposing counsel mentioned several times, I won't go into specifics, but mentioned several times. You know, that their side was, very much would like to do mediation at some point in near future. I don't think that would be appropriate now. We have discovery yet, right? But, so they're indicating willingness to come to the table, back to the table to discuss some of the. I anticipate at either our May or June meeting, I will request any session with you all. Where we can discuss if it's outside of the sunshine merits of the case. Opportunities. But now we're still going through discovery and what shape.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe the case was filed in 2020. So four years, which is, so when we received the extension, the time to get discovery done, that was very good. Sometimes the benefit you get from having shade meeting, speaking very frankly, discuss the merits of the case. Opinions, our outside counsel's opinions of what we do so that, you know, our opponent can't telegraph. I anticipate that this shade meeting will happen once we have a, any of what discovery is in case. Evidence of a number of units that were defective. We have the witness testimony to support, you know, all of the other that we made, try to repair units, things like that. If we get on that, I anticipate that this next shade meeting will much more likely revolve. A settlement evaluation that we will get what's called pre-approval on. So that when we go mediation, you know, should that. You know, we, we have a topic that we can pull out, that we can settle the case of that. Yes. Yeah.
We shared all the information. Was it number, was it?
Yeah.
But, but I mean, that was, that was then, this is how we, I mean, the fact that, and I believe I shared with you all previously, but I mean. We have not received any discovery from Avanti in this lawsuit. Four years we haven't received a document, a single response in our auditorium. Principal reason why is that we never, we never sent that. And Cliff has taken, you know, responsibility for that. Now that we have that out, we're anticipating receiving production back, discovery production back. That'll change, you know, my analysis and that's why we need another shade.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In our lifetime.
In the meantime, I anticipate speaking with each of you, dividing about the case to keep you updated on this.
General manager? Can I ask you one question before first? Last, last month you said that the environmental people will come and just put tortoise in that one thing.
That is on May 10th.
I just didn't want to forget. Thank you.
We are, we are accountants and accounts table. We have a couple. We have a few more this week and next week. And then I'll come to a decision on who we rent on board. And that will help us with potential, how we deal with it. So that's all. Our road promise is now done. I believe we removed barriers. We're taking our photos, doing our final report with Pima. Looks like that's going to be funded at the 90% level of Pima. So we're going to be good with that. Probably about three months turnaround for that to pay effect. But we've caught up with all our Pima projects and received a lot of security. We're beginning our security code enforcement, defending operations. We're conducting monthly magistrate. And we're getting effective. Through the magistrate as well as the day-to-day grind of enforcing. Manual inspections. We are basically 95% complete. This is going to be greatly appreciated during the stormy season. 90, about 200 of our manuals were either leaking, damaged, and a lot of spills. So they are in the process of being repaired. What was the last big pocket? They're knocking those out. And then there are about, there's some scattered ones around the district that people address. And then we'll be done that before the hurricane season. That will definitely, we'll see the effects of that when it comes to the. Water tables as well. You have your EV for discussion and review. That is a proposal to take from our district vehicles, all the gas tank into an EV structure. As well as install some EV charging stations around the district. That's due to sustainability. That was just something they asked of me together. Now more to follow on that. What I'll submit to you in your future is the comparable cost of keeping them on gas now. So you can bounce the two and see if there's any appetite to go down that way. We also have the Unit 12, what we've, you gave you guys more information numbers wise. Again, for your comments, if you want to either press a forward or tell no. And then I can bring that back to a developer on that. The Unit 12 development ahead of timeline does not impact the, the ability for him to purchase the other parcel. It's really just speaking about in that product, you see the map, those parcels that are close to. A lot of details in there and a lot of financials in there that. Yeah, you all read it and then we can discuss it more in detail if it moves forward as developers. Yeah. Yep. And then the only add-on I'll say, we have the Cortez dip. A lot of you driven down it on the north side of something like Oak Park going up Cortez. We find engineering analysis. It's basically a culvert like it's compromised. So we can't fix it. We got to fix it all back up. It's a $50,000 project. We have the air budget. It's in the. Replacement repair budget of roads and bridges, roads and trains. So I'm fine with executing it. It's over $25,000. I would ask if you're current that I execute. Because otherwise it'll just be compromised in the. So it is a $55,000 expenditure out of the budget, nothing more. But I just need permission.
But it's in the budget.
Well, it's in the budget where I have the money. But because I'm going to execute a project out of the budget list, I need permission. Otherwise I won't be able to. Specific projects.
Okay. Absolutely. Public comment? Call the vote. Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Jim Gofflin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Brooks? President Phillips? Yes.
I believe culverts. Farther north, there's a, where the black top is, is starting to go down also with a. Whether there's a culvert that needs to be replaced or if we just need to add some more.
That has been reported by residents, but we'll take it with them. In your packet, you have some details about the signage. Should we? More finding. I have two actual bids coming in. Waiting on a Thursday, coming Thursday to do a test, a visual. Hotline is, well, we'll start with the sedopses there. This is the worst case. This is the, I'll say it's the higher bid, but it's able to be reduced by what we choose. So this is a national company, $180,000 basically that enclose. A lot of signs. This is four single sided signs, three double sided signs. Three foot by six. That can sign right across the street. That's something, something.
Yeah.
That's a three by six. So if you want to get a visual comparison. This gives us the seven locations with the install. We've been doing the install. Worst case scenario is 180 with the install. That's. There's ways for us to reduce that cost by, you see the example there. There's the ability that they will basically have a standing free stand sign post with a box. And it's hung and it says Sunlight. See the picture? Basically they stand alone, plug it in and place. If we, if we eliminate the, the, we basically just buy in the box. It's a sealed box. We put stuff, we can save basically $26,000. And if we set up and they don't come with all the accessories, we could end, again, for an correction, that's $26,000. Five six foot. So we eliminate a foot off the top. Still a pretty decent sign. There's a lap on frontage road that are that size and so on. Then we can save another $25,000. So worst case scenario, if we nub down that. I can break down about 50 grand and still meet requirement of seven locations across the district. So there's some real room in there and that's as well as with the other bid and the one. An idea, an option we have is if you want me to continue the negotiation so we can come to an agreement. These things in production. If you want to authorize a max amount and I bring back just the final, we can do that. Or you can wait for me to get the free bid side by side. Parameters there that may take a couple of weeks. I'm trying to get the stays installed before the hurricane season. And our tent is a sophisticated accounting, again, for reimbursement. We're building them, placing them, and they will be on backup power that we will be able to use them for hurricanes in the winter season. So we're ready to get them, the county to chip in, some funding on that. So worst case scenario is 180, but I foresee the other cases are probably going to be $10,000, $20,000 less. As well as we can reduce this 180 down to, down by $50,000 if we wanted to. The locations are on your map. The red. You can play with the locations here. That's basically will be oriented towards the driving side where people can see it on one side. The yellow or dull side, the same message. They will all be controlled. Stores, they'll all be saying the same message. There could be an individual message. But they're all, they're all going to be on the network. It's a cellular signal that gets networked out.
All say the same message?
They can. They can. That's the easiest. It's like oil, water, everybody's.
Yeah.
By sign specified, this is the preserve, do this, this, this.
And the one in the middle could be used for advertisement for the. Restaurant golf.
Exactly. And they all can say. There's a restaurant special today.
Okay.
So we have some options there. So other than seeing this last quote coming in on Thursday, I'm comfortable that. Worst case scenario is 180. If you, if you want to approve tax cap, we start moving out this. If you want us to wait another meeting, do that as well. We post money in and then production gets posted.
I don't know why we want to put ourselves on a digital thing on 27. If you want to attract people to our restaurant, as you were saying before. You got to tell them that, I mean, the residents know that it's a restaurant. Plus there'll be six signs about the dirt district. But not. If you want to attract the outside public, you got to tell them where we are.
Don't we have a billboard?
I mean, we could say restaurant, you know. Chicken specials, $13.99. It doesn't blink every second. You can hold it.
To me, we have the option of double sided that we can push out there. I would say we definitely want our coming in as a double sided, it's both people going in and out. I would say definitely front of the district office, but the one right there. Granada and Ortega or Bernata. We could just eliminate that and move that to 27.
Oh, that's a good idea. That's an excellent idea. No. Yeah, put it on 27.
We have that option. We control locations. I appreciate you.
You can even do a golf special. $29.99.
We are. It's a good opportunity to install something.
Good.
Anything else, comments, any guidance you want? Move it or?
All right, I'll give you a motion, a motion to approve the seven digital signs.
Wait a minute, we have a question.
This is just the motion.
Okay.
Last month you said, rough numbers, $100,000. Yes, was something surprising to you that happened? Well, we, we, we added the. The picture that you have in your, the signage with Sunlight logoing. That obviously added a cost. If, that's what I say. We have a way to divide that 50 grand. Are you comfortable doing the, whatever we're doing? Uh, the sign, we have the installation. It's a self-contained sign that we can put on posts right back. We can do that. We can get the logo, the labeling, the marketing, our name through our local companies we use. And put something at a lot cheaper rate than them wrapping. Around the posts. So I'm comfortable that we can go a reduced route. We install it and we get a local company put the logo. Because if I just send an $180,000 check, you're getting this picture right here. It's all black, it's a box, it's installed.
Okay, what's?
If you approve up to 180, then we're going to do it the way you see it here. And then it might. But to your point, that's a lot of $100,000. We didn't include all the other signs.
Motion? We have. Public opinion.
Daniel Garvin again. We're talking about hurricane. Are these solar powered or backup or?
All our locations will be backup generator capable.
All the signs?
Yes. All these locations are near a backup generator that we're going to have to turn on anyway, so it'll power us. I'll make that specifically.
It didn't make any sense to me.
Another 27, that's the only change in location.
We want 27. We want 27. Any other question? Call the vote. Oh, wait a minute. No? Call the vote.
Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes.
All right. We only had three expenditures.
Are you really trying to tell me that residents?
It's an interesting dynamic, yes. Because they are able to control their consumption, and they're very cognizant of bills, that's been a current trend where people are.
Well, yeah.
Sir, yes, sir.
Absolutely. Excuse me, a bill for $65, the first time that my meter was read. We're taking baths together now. I am watching my water.
What you're not seeing there is the true, true consumption of our commercials for the last few years ago. So you're going to start seeing a trend of commercial used in our hospitals, or elder homes. Start seeing that consumption appropriately displayed, and that will take up a little.
Sewer is up 8%.
Yep, sewers.
I'm watching, I really am, $65, that's a $100 increase.
The road, the surface in play, $100.
Yes.
Which account is that coming out?
The roads, reserves of the roads. There's like $800,000 in there. Yes. Right, early in May, that's the timeline we're getting right now. $50,000, nothing of concern, the three things already budgeted, so I'll move that session as well. Okay, our golf, not the label, our golf rings, there's a third party that's reviewing the drainage, our engineer. So a golfer, not a golf person, not a golf community person, our district engineer, once Jimmy lays down the 18 greens, will be looking at the drainage piping, make sure it makes sense, just to confirm it, a third party that looks in. So we're good on that, and I appreciate him mentioning, yes, we're getting some external in the field, some matter experts to come to check our, check our map, check our homework. That we've done through either Truman or this contact. This is the timeline that you have in your packet, the two add-ons that will go, I added the manpower hours, we're going to start tracking with this project. This is tied to. So you see that bottom line manpower, that's that line we captured, that is our official take, and we'll track it weekly, update you weekly if needed. So we can track that. We're also to, we missed the door, there are two blue VIP guest overview days, so these will be days where we go out, we're going to be golfer, non-golfer, come see what's going on, where your money's been. They will come out, and we will basically take them to a project site, show them what's going on. It'll be in their face, it'll be, this is what we're digging, this is what we're replacing, this is how it's going to look, and it gets that transparency on the project. It'll be managed by the golf team, we'll get out their golf carts, we'll show them, we'll basically hold their hand, take them out there, and then bring them off the course, so you don't have a bunch of scratches going on. Have that planned in towards it.
Two questions, one request. See that three minutes? On my piece of paper, I don't see.
Under, under airification. I probably see this.
Well, it's just.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see copies of my.
Okay. We had some issues, and we're.
And then the other question I have. We're closing terminal in two days in June, and two days in August, so that means there's no talk about those two days.
We're closing terminal, you see that?
I just want to make sure I understand that, because this.
Yeah, in this instance, we're going to have to do that if we want to do our three airification practices, it's going to take us two days to do.
I'm just saying, that's something we probably have.
There's a chance, there is a chance that we could have, I'm thinking backwards, absolutely, we're going to be closed those two days, please.
That's, that's, 27, so that's three days.
It'll reopen, it's going to require two days, that must be a bad date out there.
But we'll get the message out.
Yes.
Because there are still people that are.
We'll get the message out once, I just want to keep you abreast that this will be something more presenting monthly, to show you our progress. Nothing much for the anniversary, we've done the good projects, we're working towards.
57 to 12.
Now, a couple of those slides, photos from the music and the park, the first one, we had another one after the gala, May, until one April. So well attended, and it was great time, and we had food trucks and beer cart, everybody in there, so it was, it was good music.
Just as the.
Sir.
Question to the golfers, why not work Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Three days of.
The way it is right now, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm saying, is the middle of the district.
They have to bring workers in. Oh, well, you've got, yeah.
So look at the Tuesday, aren't concerned about that?
I'm just saying, if we can do it in two days, why not do it on the weekend?
Oh, that's it. All right, we'll look.
The other thing we could, is you could. Say, hey, for the members, since we're closing the course, you can go to some golf family or I don't.
That, yeah, absolutely, that's, we've had that discussion, we'll definitely do that, regardless of what we do with, with that, but we'll take a look at the weekend thing, it may be a challenge, but.
We'll, we'll, we have time to react.
On the 50th anniversary.
Yes, sir. Sales are, I think we're up 78, 98. That's individual sales, we actually have over $15,000 sponsorship from businesses that bought some tables with that. I think we're pushing over 100, we have 200 was our cap, so we're doing well on that, we're continuing to message it out, and. For what we receive in sponsorship and tickets, so, so we should be good.
How we doing with the golf?
I think more to follow that, we got to refine that.
I don't have more to follow on that, that sign up started recently, so I don't have.
I probably did it for yourself, but.
Are we talking about the tournament price? Yeah, so.
But that doesn't.
Right, so we're going to have, it's, we're going to have a whole slew of tickets, gifts, prizes, and all that in there, so that's what, it's minus 80.
The members, you get them really don't, you got to make it worth following, I mean, right. $30 per event, and this one, first, you get a meal. There's no meal involved this time, so.
Out of that, I'll promise you this, so out of, out of that, out of that membership money will not go to green speeds or anything like that, it's going to go to the tournament for fun, for, for prizes, tickets, all that sort of stuff.
So everything goes well. We have 15 VIP invites, chairman and chair of a few other VIPs, and you guys are, I think I've got reservations, I think except for you two. You're in? Then we're good, we have the whole, we there, so we're. I'll take, per the discussion, the new location is our road that goes to El Gusto, the back entrance. So down Ortega, the way you get to pick up your kids at the middle school, that dead end road, where unit 12 is, that's the location, as you see on the map, that the county would prefer to be, it's out of sight. Granted, it's not a frontage, we've come to an accommodation that those people will be on for the county house, there are any better location where it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, and still easily accessible down Sheen marker to our entrance, and they take a right. And still it's close to our Sunlight residence. So the specific details is how they, so if you go back here, you come in off of Ortega, if you see that where the big reservoir is, you take a, you take a right here, you start going towards the school, down west, right behind the U-Haul, that little bump in the road, is where this is, where they want to put the, those two green parcels, that's the recycle center.
And that's.
You go entry, all the containers will be there, they'll still have that all the way around, except for along the road, you'll have access to the road, this is totally the county.
So it's behind the U-Haul?
Right behind the first buildings of the U-Haul you see right there.
It's not wetlands?
Not wetlands, no.
Okay, because of, okay.
You see a reservoir right there.
Yeah.
So it makes total sense for us. It's a great location, it also gives easy access to all Sunlight residents, and it's no cost to us. So I would recommend that that's, that's, except for the U-Haul, and we move out with the engineer to get the sink done, so they can get it built this year.
Ah.
No, not for right now, because I need the county to come back and say, we're going to build this for this amount, and then we'll do a motion to accept. But I wanted to confirm the location that you all agree with.
As long as the county does, but if it ends up.
It'll be monitored by them, it's actual person, a body will be there, the body poses, we ask the county to add a camera, that we will monitor, so we have eyes on, our security drives by, check our locations, so it'll be monitored. But I think it's at a good location, it does not.
I think the location is great.
We already talked to Mr. Orneck and his designs, that fact that he must do now and in the future. So other than consensus, our county.
Okay.
And then you have your golf bits, and the packet for golf bits, and then the last thing for excavator purchase. The biggest issue here, and I'll just, Eric goes a bit more about it, the issue here is why we're going with Caterpillar, it's a dual hydraulic pump. If the main pump breaks, for the lift, for the crane, I can still extract and get it now, I can still move it. All the other options, if you ask for a dual pump, it has about $100,000 to. So we're going with the dual hydraulic pump, and it gives us equipment that we can have at our own control, time to go out and clear our swales. If we ever have another break in the water line, I can give my piece of equipment, my option to that contractor, and. So $90,000 out of our equipment fund, is about a 70 to 90 day turnaround on a piece of equipment, it's brand new, and it'll come with all the appropriate heads, and we have the expertise to operate it right now. If I can get a motion to accept that, so we can get.
How big is this thing?
This is, well, it's 20, but it's, it's not the small one we have, it's twice the size.
You have a trailer to get to it?
We would have, our, our trailer's accommodated, yes, that's a trailer, it wouldn't.
Is it steel trap for?
I have a question, I'll, I'll, more likely.
I was thinking steel.
Yeah, for that size, it's probably steel. The only thing that's radar, is probably during budget time, will be that curb. That's Miami curb thing, where we control it, so we can start doing all our little intersection.
But that would be for the next.
Next year, but this year, it's the last thing.
So we should end that, that account of that couple hundred thousand.
This is the last big purchase. We're about the gators, we've already bought three, you know, pieces of water this year, that's the last, unbudgeted, but we have the funding in the budget line. So this, this over time will save the district immensely for rent. Every year, we rent the same piece of wood, at 50, 60. And this just puts it under our control, our time, execution. So any questions?
Do you have a question? Long time, much more than come on soon to.
Caterpillar's good.
Much better quality, much better retention of value, and just, it's the right way to go.
Need a motion to accept these, or authorize these managers?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the tracks, that's big, 309 Caterpillar, $190,000, from District project.
Public comment?
Yes.
Supervisor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes.
And planning director, strategic planning engagement, he's at training with the management of the county, Rowland. That's all I have with that. My fault. Roger Jason, he's our current code enforcement officer, he worked inside with Bob Hills, been with us a long while. Seven months. Seven months, I'll let you talk to your background real quick, wealth of knowledge, but he was a person that I could rely on very quickly, so in addition, he made significant record operations. And the only change from what you all were thinking, because operations are day to day drive, it's a lot of moving pieces, I threw recreation for his control, because recreation security, code enforcement, and planning permitting, all kind of do a lot of things together. I kept utilities and roads separate for now, there could be a potential to move it, but right now they're separate reporting to me, and I'm not that, because I have a directory of utilities, Brandon and Bob, Ronfield directly to me, not an issue right here, but.
Good afternoon, board. Quick, background check, I'm a veteran, I was right at high school, Vietnam was still raging, so I enlisted, spent my six years, got out, no clue what I wanted to do in life. My hair was short, but everybody else's hair was long, I started a hazmat cleanup company. During that time that I owned this business, it grew quite large, but I also got my certification to become a patrol officer on Federal Link in New York. During that time, I went on to become the police commissioner of the community, actually went on to become the mayor. And I was the mayor for quite a few years, I was offered my business to be bought out, sold it, moved to Florida, I moved to Naples, was there for 20 years, became the harbor master, was also in charge of enforcement division, in charge of beach patrol, in charge of parking enforcement. I rebuilt the Naples City Dock, that cost us $7 million, which was a profit division only, no tax dollars included. I then got headhunted by. After Hurricane Ian, they needed somebody to coordinate all the reconstruction, city and FEMA. So I spent months with them trying to coordinate all of that, including the funding, including working with all contractors. And finally, back in October, I said, I lost two hurricanes, I'm going to move inland, that's when I moved this to break. I'm an ex-guard. I've got eight FEMA categories, I was the assigned person to EOC in for a number of years, probably my most special time was being a special coach, winning two gold medals in basketball.
Oh, yeah.
So that's my background.
Welcome.
That's all we have.
Follow up items, new business. Discussion to and from the board?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two or three days before, is that the way that is?
That's the actual, the actual date of the.
That's the date.